Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the May 3 meeting of the Hyde Park Planning Board. Please take note of exits around the room in case of emergency and join us as we salute the Stars and Stripes.
...................................................
Thank you. The first item on the agenda this evening is a new public hearing for Jeffrey Groves Estates. The applicants are seeking a one-year extension to commence substantial construction on the site plan portion. As a reminder to those in the audience, when this application was originally approved, it was for a nine single-family slot subdivision as well as, I believe, 45 townhomes. Make it a motion to reopen the public hearing.
No move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Louis Kaufman for the applicant, North Cross, the owner of Jeffrey Groves Estates. Just for the record, it's 38 townhouses and nine lots.
Thirty-eight and nine, right.
Forty-seven total.
And, Mr. Kaufman, you're here because you're still working with Duchess County Water and Wastewater Authority on what exactly is going to be installed for the sewage system?
Yes, you know, first of all, I just wanted to say for one time, I'm very happy that the public hearings have to go first, but...
Yes, we had the long one last time, you had to leave, I remember.
We've been trying, we found an efficient system, and, you know, that's easier to install. It's really a package system, and it's going to be less intrusive, and it's got all the good stuff. And now it has to be placed upon the site by the engineer, which we have now filed, and he's like working his way through it. Mr. Sataro knows the firm and the engineer, and I have little notes, but if he said if he needed to explain where he's at, but, you know, suffice to say that it looks like we're finally getting it in place onboard and get started here.
Do you still intend on coming back to the board to re-subdivide so that you have a few more townhomes and get rid of the single-family homes, or... I don't want, I'm not tying you...
I understand. You know, we thought that was the better way to go, and then we were like, you know, we're market-driven in many ways, and so now we're wondering maybe the nine lots would work okay. You know, we always felt that they were a little distant, but maybe that's nicer. Here's the bottom line: I'm going as planned unless I come back. So, that's it. You know, the site plan you know is the site plan you're getting.
Thank you. Are there any comments from the consultants, Mr. Sataro, Ms. Polidoro?
No.
Any comments from the board?
No.
What do you want from the public to like to speak about this application? Please just come on up and state your name for the record.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, no, I'm sorry, come on up into the microphone. So, we're broadcast as well as recorded on YouTube.
Wow, alright.
You're a celebrity now.
Oh, I made it. I'm Hugo Corvera. I live at 12 Mountain View, and your buildings are right in my backyard. I just wanted to, actually, I wanted to know more information, like in terms of buffering distance between my house and the thing, what kind of things would actually go there to...
Let me answer that, because he's not required to answer, you, we are. It's okay.
Sorry.
There is no buffering required because they're all residential uses. Under the Hyde Park Code, if there's a commercial use or non-residential use, then there's required to be some sort of screening, and it's up to the planning board to determine the sufficient opacity or how much it blocks, how much it soundblocks. But residential to residential, there is nothing required.
Okay.
It would just be whatever the owners of the sites want to put up for landscaping, basically.
That being said, though, there are setbacks required by our code.
Yes.
So, it's not like there's going to be a house right up on your lot line, that, you know, there's certain distances from the back and the sides.
Have you had a chance to look at the plans yet?
I haven't. I need a, I would like to do that.
Yeah, if you come in to, you can reach Ms. Whitman, our administrative assistant, the one in the pink and the today curly hair, and she'll be happy to show you the official map. I don't think any of the houses are really too close to any of the other boundaries. As I recall, there's a water element there, and most of the houses were sited so they could kind of see the water, and they're closer to the water, the little pond that's there, rather than anything that's up on Mountain View. But you will probably look down and see them.
Yeah, exactly, precisely. Okay, alright. And there's, I mean, I'm new to this, so there's no way for me to pass or, like, contest this situation. It's approved, that means...
So, what happened is, is that it was approved, or, in 2007, I think?
And then again in, 2007, and then again in 2013.
Right, and so, the way this works is unless there's new information that would emerge that would somehow cause us to reopen the environmental review portion of it, we're bound by precedent, so to speak. So, and in this case, when we have projects that are this old, there were wetlands there, and we had the boundaries redelineated because the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation, the DEC, would like for us to make certain that boundaries are set every five years because wetlands actually kind of wander. So, prior to giving the last, or two extensions ago, we had it recertified. Basically, there's been a combination of a bad economic market for these kinds of, this kind of development for this size, as well as the fact that they've been working on their wastewater treatment plant.
Okay.
The proposal that was originally approved might have been called the Cadillac or the Rolls Royce, and they're looking for more a mid-sized compact version right now. But those are subject to approval by the department, the County Department of Health as well as Duchess County...
More like a Subaru.
More like a Subaru, there you go. So, at any rate, the analogy would be that that's something that's, but, once it's been approved and they've met the conditions so that the chair or designee, one of the vice-chairs, can sign, then I guess we would have the right to, at one point, say, "No, we're not going to continue to approve this," but we'd have to have a really strong reason.
Okay.
And there isn't any new information that's emerged in terms of environmental impacts or anything else that would cause us to do that.
So, there's no studies to be weighted on or anything?
No, no, all that was done in the original process, and like I said, I think this was submitted first maybe in two, precedes me, maybe 2004.
Something like that, yeah.
Yeah, this was, so it took about three and a half years for them to get the approval in the first place.
Oh, right, right.
And a lot of that was based on, I mean, I can say this, the current board, the way we operate, we look, this was proposed under a different code even. The zoning changed in 2005. This was done, this was accommodating the current density that's allowed there under the current code, but the road that has the townhouses has a huge rock outcrop that's going to have to be removed, and probably the board would have worked with the applicant now to try to change that because we try to preserve natural features like rock outcrops.
Yeah.
So...
Do you know what, like, so you're saying not blasting that rock?
They're not, they have to chip some. It's not a total blasting, no.
Okay.
Had there been blasting, then that would have been investigated under the environmental review.
Oh, okay, alright.
Feel free to drop in, and if you make an appointment, I'll try to come in too and talk to you about it. That can be a little less formal at that point.
That'd be great.
Okay.
Thank you.
Nice to have you in town if you're new.
Yeah, thanks, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak about this application? There being none, no further comments? Make it a motion to close the public hearing?
No move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And who has this resolution?
It's on the outside.
I have, okay. Oh, somebody hit it. Okay, resolution to grant one-year extension of all deadlines pursuant to Section 108-9.6A of the Town Code, Jeffrey Groves Estates, May 3, 2017. Resolution 68-12E. Whereas, 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 now therefore be resolved that the planning board hereby grants a one-year extension pursuant to Section 108-9.6A of the code of the time in which the applicant must commence construction to and including June 14, 2018, and the time in which to complete the construction to and including June 14, 2019. And, there will be no written or verbal notification from the planning board office to the applicant at such time as the extension expires. Any requests for an extension of the deadlines set forth herein must be submitted to the planning board at least 30 days in advance of said dates.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. I hope we don't see any year for another extension request. I hope you're able to break ground, but if we did, it'll be nice to see you again. Thanks for your patience.
I'll remember to change the color of my socks.
Oh, no, I like it.
Your argyle is in orange, yes. And is it C-O-R-B-A-R-A?
With a V, yes.
With a V, Corvera, okay. Like I said, it's 229-5111, Extension 2, and if you make an appointment, I'll try to see if I can make it in to meet you. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is a new public hearing for what is known as Small World at AD West Dorsey. Make it a motion to open the public hearing?
No move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. As a reminder, the applicants are seeking both a special use permit and site plan. In this instance, there are two two-family residences on the site. Under our current code, this makes, in the district, a prior non-conforming use. Because, under our code, the use has not lapsed over a year, it can be rebuilt even though it's non-conforming, which would be the two-family house. In addition, the applicant is seeking a special use permit to do a slight increase in expansion on an upper floor. Note, again, that the footprint for the burnt-down building is not changing, there's just a bit of reconfiguration in the overall space. Mr. Bird, let me turn it over to you.
Thank you. Good evening, sir Chairman, members of the board. Not so much sure of what I can add after your wonderful description of the project, but it is a building that has been damaged by fire. It was an existing non-conforming, it's been there for a while. And the increase has, the current, the current structure as it exists is more of a Cape Cod, so what we're looking to do is increase and raise the walls up to make it more into a two-story. And the second floor is going to be set back a little bit from, from the front, so it'll soften, it won't be a big two-story wall that will be sitting right on Dorsey Lane. The footprint is slightly smaller than the existing footprint that's there. It will be going the exact same spot. We will be adding buffering, a garbage enclosure in the rear with some buffering around it to help ease that, the look of that. The fence that is partially down right now in between the two properties and, and any of the vegetation that's there will get put back up to keep the, to maintain the screening. And any additional screening that's deemed, that we deem that's needed, we'll determine that one hopefully during construction or after the house is up. Property itself will be remaining as is. We're not looking at black topping, we're not looking at any external lighting. Any lighting that's for the driveway will be on motion sensors, so it's not going to be on and off at any point in time. You know, it won't be timers, so that'll be on at any, all night long, or if the timer goes out, it will be on all night long, so it's more of a convenience lighting when somebody pulls in.
Thank you very much. I'll point out that that's sort of voluntary buffering again because it's all residential uses both to either side of you, but as the old saying goes, fences make great neighbors. Let me start with our consultants, Mr. Sataro and Ms. Polidoro, any comments?
No, the only comment that we had had, we talked about it, was I wasn't sure that they were going to increase the number of bedrooms, but bedrooms are going to stay, you know, the same, so that's not going to impact the county health department, so that was the only issue that we had, or concern, I should say.
Thank you. Ms. Polidoro?
No comments.
Any comments from the board, from my left? This came Mr. Murphy, Mr. Pickett, to my right. Let me open this up for public comment. If you'd like to speak, just come on up, and you can just, you can stay there and just pass the microphone down.
I was just moving my folder out of his way.
I didn't mean to be rude. Your questions should always go to us and comments should go to us rather than the applicant, that's all.
Okay. You want to come up?
You're both welcome to, just state your, just make sure you state your name for the record.
I am owner of the AD West Dorsey Lane, a property. And because my, my name's Alexandra Polanska, P-O-L-A-N-S-K-A.
Thank you.
And because I'm not very familiar with the terms of, you know, the thing we're talking about, I'm Polish nationality, but anyway, my son will be part of me, alright?
Okay.
Michael Polansky, P-O-L-A-N-S-K-I.
Yes, Mr. Polansky.
Okay, so, this rebuilding, we had just gotten word of via the letter, so we're here, which is, it's nice to see that the building's going to be repaired because we've been looking at it, you've been looking at it for a while, and it's no site, so that's nice, that's a good thing. The existing property...
We lived there for thirty, over thirty years.
Oh.
We joined, you know, the property with this other land, and always was some kind of problem with the narrow driveway, which is very, very narrow. You are aware of that, but you have okay to build, rebuild, or anything, but it's also my concern that the septic system originally built for the second house, which is a little bit further down there, it's on my property. Yes, it is. So, and that should be fixed.
I have to look at the plans. I didn't see, do you have a copy of the plan?
I do. It says approximate location in the back, although it does show a box over here. It's not labeled.
If I may, there's no record, oh, sorry. I haven't been able to find any record of any septic, so we went by where the pipes go out and then approximate cleanouts that we found, so I'm, if we had to, I guess we could do some exploratory to find out, because obviously if the septic's on the neighbor's property, it can't be there.
No, and the Department of Health doesn't approve septic on somebody else's lot.
I don't know, I don't know how this has happened, but it is there, so...
Do you remember when the last cleanout was?
Yes, I exactly know where is it, I can point to it.
Or when it was last, because every once in a while, there is...
It was dig up, it's dig up.
Everyone has to clean them periodically.
Right.
Yeah.
Is the, are you saying that the, the sort of...
Do we have the box?
Yeah, the box is actually on your property?
Well, I think that septic system may have been replaced, I think, when the deceasers may have lived there. I think that, you know, I've met you out there a couple times in the past, so I think that when the deceasers owned it, that they had replaced the septic in the back. Now, I don't know, you know, exactly where it is, but if you feel that it's, if you feel that it's on your property, that is something that we should look at in some fashion.
Absolutely, I agree with that as well.
Yeah, yeah, I know you didn't like, yeah.
Pete, how wide does it show the driveway?
Well, it shows the driveway.
I can, I can point it actually to you, this map.
Yeah, we have the same...
I don't have a scale with me, but it's showing, the engineer doesn't have one, but the attorney has one, a scale. I'm going to guess it's about maybe eleven feet, maybe, based upon the dimensions on the plan, but it seems...
Can you describe what the problems you're referring to with the narrow driveway are?
Oh, narrow driveway? Well, we're right. This actually, on the map, look like properties, perfect, you know, rectangular or parallel line, but actually it's not like that. The driveway is curved.
Right, yeah, this is...
Right?
It shows it being curved.
Right.
Right in through here, it curves and then leads to the gravel in the back.
Right, so this septic is right here.
It's only about ten feet.
I can mark it.
Oh, yeah, I mean, it's not going to be, it's not going to be wide enough, you know, for two-way traffic, but most driveways aren't.
Yeah, right.
No, it's absolutely not two-way traffic.
No, it's...
No, driveways really aren't.
You know, it's ten feet, it's ten feet at the narrowest, narrowest spot.
Narrowest spot.
And are you saying that the septic is somewhere back in through here?
I think it's...
No, 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 no.
It's, it's...
It's in the back.
To the left of the second house.
It's exactly right here.
Oh.
Yeah?
I'm not...
Well, that could be, that could be the tank, maybe, that goes, that goes to the field.
They dig, each time it's full, they dig, and my property, and never fixed.
I was led to believe on the other that it's in the back, so if that could be...
If that will be fixed, I will appreciate it.
Well, no, we're going to look at, we won't be looking into it, but the applicant's representatives will be.
Thank you.
If it's a septic tank, we'll definitely get it moved out of your property.
Sorry.
My apologies. If the septic tank is on your property, we'll definitely take a look at it, and if we have to move it, we will.
Thank you.
No problem at all, not a problem.
I have a question, I have a question, you know, for you guys. Way back when, we used to have a drainage issue on your property. If you like, remember, there used to be, there was a spot on your property where we used to get a lot of water from behind where St. Peter's Church?
Right, right.
And I know, I remember coming out to see you. Have you had any problems recently or not? Because I know what happened was when we got the State Department of Transportation, when they had redone the highway there, we got them to put in stormwater management basin on the other, other side of the road to hopefully hold some of that, some of that water back. I haven't gotten any, any complaints from any neighbors down on West Dorsey since then, and I was just curious whether you guys have had any issues lately.
It's much improved, but every time there's a significant rainfall, it's still, you know, it's a heavy, it's a heavy flow, and we've had a stone wall put in there between, I believe it's 84 and 82, and that wall has slowly been, you know, pushed out by the water.
Yeah.
Sometimes the water flow is significant, so it's definitely managed.
At least, it's better?
Yeah.
Okay.
Significantly.
Thanks.
Yep, that's it, for me.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Polanska, and Mr. and Ms. Polanska.
Thank you.
Any other further public comment? So, Victoria and Pete, we should continue the public hearing until we find out more information about where the septic is located. Do you think you can get this done in like, before the next meeting, so we can adjourn it just to the next meeting?
I'll, I'll, I'll see if I can make it happen.
I know it's a lot of manpower to suddenly pull people over there to investigate.
Yeah, to be honest with you, I mean, because we weren't changing the septic, the bedroom count, and we didn't do a lot of diligence on the septic because we weren't...
There's no changes proposed.
No changes in the septic, you know, we went by, you know...
Having to go in front of the counties.
Yeah, so, yeah, so we, so we'll take a look at it now.
I often...
Now we'll do our diligence.
I often say that planning boards can't solve neighborly disputes, but in this case, this is something that maybe we can at least resolve to find out exactly where it's located.
Absolutely. If the septic tank is on their property, we have no choice, but we have to move it.
Thank you. You're very reasonable.
No sense fighting with you.
No.
Otherwise, otherwise we'll be here forever.
You need to repeat that, no, I'm just teasing. Then make it a motion to continue the public hearing to May 17.
No move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And we had a resolution prepared, so we'll, it's already ready to go, once we resolve this, and, because I know that, as fellow residents of the town, we don't want to see a building stay there looking like it does, because I've been by that place a lot lately on my way to the community college, and I also know that the people who live there want to get back into it, too.
Yeah. I was, to be honest with you, I was actually hoping it was, they would have started to bring it down, because I know we had filed months ago for a public hearing, or for a demolition permit, to get rid of it because it's just unsafe, and I'm not sure why it hasn't been started, whether contractors...
I don't have an answer there for you, because the demolition permit does not go through us.
No, no.
It's just a ministerial action.
I would, if you're looking for a way to get it down, I'll just add that you're almost within the year, and you only had one year to rebuild, to rebuild, because it's not conforming, so they may want to start taking it down now so that when you do get approval, it's much faster.
Yeah. Well, like I said, I know I filed for a building, a demolition permit, I believe it was back in October, to drop the building down, and I know it took a little time because it went up to TAD and there was some confusion going on, but I have, I got a letter here from TAD to the bill, to, to Mr. Westermeyer, stating that it was approved, and we just had to, they just had to pay the $50 fee to the planning department, or the zoning department.
Right, for the review.
Yeah.
I think part of that confusion may have been just that she was looking to assess exactly how these two, two-family homes got there in the first place, that's all, so, but yeah.
It's still a mystery.
Well, the contractors should start, I think, Victoria is right, just make everything copacetic.
I'm going to call the owner as soon as I leave here and tell him he's got to get them over there.
Okay.
Because, like I said, I know it's been approved, and the permit's waiting either to have, it's either has been picked up or it's waiting to be. Because, you know, I just, it's an eyesore, and I think the neighbors would appreciate it if we got rid of it.
It sounds like it.
Would it be possible to get a copy of the drawing, what size you have available or here in hand, or...
I have a copy here.
Okay, they would appreciate it.
Someone from the board may volunteer, his or her.
I have an extra copy with me.
You do? Okay, great. Thank you.
I always bring an extra, just in case.
Thank you, we'll see you in two weeks, then.
In two weeks, thank you.
The next item on the agenda is a new public hearing for 1636 Route 9G. The applicants are seeking approval for an exterior modification to an existing structure. This is, for longtime locals, a former carpet store. It's been sitting empty since, and the applicants are proposing to reclad it, to make some landscaping changes as well. Okie doke. Make it a motion to open the public hearing?
No move.
Take this one.
I just want to point out that Chan, you and Chris are three for three now.
It is, yeah.
It's the same, it's every time again. Okay, so, the Whitmans are here, let me turn it over to you guys.
Hey, what? Very long.
No.
What can we do with this? Good evening, all. Hang on one second. You, ready?
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm, by now, I'm sure you're familiar with our drawings and plans and windows changes, which are all in there. You have seen copies?
We have.
Okay.
And I see that you won, that you won the battle for that.
No comment.
Yes, yep.
So, other than her winning the battle, nothing else has changed.
Then, what I'll, what I should say then, for the benefit of anybody from the public that's not had a chance to look at the application...
Just wanted a time.
It's a, it's a renovation where there'll be triple-glazed windows, there'll be different walls. Right now, there's a limited number of entrances, there'll be four, it's designed for four offices. There's new signage, as I pointed out earlier, new landscaping, et cetera. And if I can say this correctly, I think you're going for a sort of industrial aesthetic that seems appropriate for the age of the building as well as your architecture in general, so. And in addition, since the last application, we have a new sign that looks to me pretty much in keeping with what you're proposing there. It's really cool-looking, I think, so, just my opinion. Let me start from, to the left with our consultants. Any comments, Mr. Sataro, Ms. Polidoro?
No, we talked about sealing and striping the lot, but I see that that got, that got uh, that got added. I think that's gonna be good, uh, cause a lot, as I said, I stopped by there, uh, late last week and the lot's actually not in bad, bad shape in the front.
I was surprised, too.
If you just clean out the cracks, seal them, should like be good for quite a, quite a while. The only thing that's a little weird is, uh, you show the approximate, uh, well and then...
Under the lot. Under the lot. That's what we think the well is.
Oh, so it's not, it's not sticking up?
It's not sticking up.
Okay. Never mind. I thought it was sticking up and we have like a door right there, I'm like, come on, Catherine, you know better than that. No, that's it.
Well, it's approximate, so. It's an approximate location.
Okay, I got it. So it's not visible. That was it.
Thank you, Ms. Paladaro.
Um, excuse me. So the, the new plans that came in showed tenant panels for two of the tenant spaces and then locations for the other two. So we just added a note, the resolution, saying that you're approving the two tenant panels, but you'll have to come back for approval of the other tenant spaces once you find some tenants. The second item just has to do with, uh, the planter on Partridge Hill Road. According to the plan, it just sticks out a little bit into the right of way. And so, at least that's what it looks like. So either scooch it back in or get a letter from the town board or something from the highway super saying that it can stay there.
That is just a grassy area that exists. It's not really a planter.
It doesn't say timber planter?
We could take out the timber.
There is no timber there.
You sure?
Yeah.
Yes, the timber's gone.
Okay, well, it says timber planter to remain. On the plan.
Scratch that out. We can take that off.
Take it out.
Just make that a condition, remove.
Change the timber planter to be removed.
Okay, well, so the condition's on there, you can, you can take care of it however you see fit.
I'll make sure it's gone, if there's anything left of it there. Can I contest our own drawings since I haven't seen the signage yet?
You may comment on them, but, uh, it may be to the detriment of your marriage.
Oh, boy.
You guys need to work this out.
We have to find time to see one another.
Uh, any other comments?
Not for me.
Uh, I just want to point out that also, I should have done this at the beginning, uh, in every business district, we're required to put in sidewalks, but it's been the board's practice that where speed, design speeds of the roadway is 55 and above, unless there's a really safe way to put a sidewalk back in, we try not to have them, uh, unless there's a neighborhood that would utilize this to get around. Um, in your instance, you wrote a request for a waiver and the board will be evaluating that tonight, but, uh, in advance, I'm inclined to be in favor of it. You're creating now a sidewalk essentially in front of the building, uh, where one doesn't exist because of the planter there. So if people wanted to walk around, say from the apartments from behind, they just come up by your building and go around down to the southern uses. And you've also proposed trees where essentially a sidewalk would go. So I think, speaking for myself, I'd rather see the trees there to soften the environment, uh, rather than having a sidewalk there. So, just want to put that in for the record.
Okay.
Uh, let me start to my right. Any comments, Mr. Oliver?
Uh, a couple of comments.
Oh, oops, that's not working.
Nope.
Do you want to borrow mine?
Oh, that's right.
I would suggest, uh, changing the street tree variety. I think the Japanese maple will be a little bit low and might block, uh, the vision for, for cars and get damaged by the snow. So maybe go with like, uh, October Glory, red maple or, uh, they have Japanese maples. And also, if you go on, uh, New York State DOT's website, they have a whole list of their approved street trees and you can pick anything out of there.
Is this approved by Central Hudson when they come and chop them down anyway?
They'll, they'll prune them. They won't chop them down.
That's what I mean.
As long as they're within the, you know, approved specimen.
There are wires there.
Yeah.
Don't your wires come from, don't your, doesn't your utility line come from across the, uh, the west side of 9G?
No, there's wires.
There's wires in front of the building. I'm not, I know they come down Partridge Hill, but I don't actually know where the palls are across the street or not.
They're showing a utility pole on the north side of the property, that's the reason why I asked.
There is one here.
Mm-hmm. In other words, I haven't, I didn't take pictures, but I didn't think that there was one running right along the, uh, western edge of the western boundary.
Well, they come down Partridge Hill, on the northern side of Partridge Hill.
Right. So what I'm saying is, where your trees are, if, thank you...
They don't want me to talk to you anymore, Mike.
No, no, no. In other words, Chris's comment is that the Japanese maple is not on the DOT approved list, but if you have overhead wires, I would rather you put a Japanese maple in and as it ages, limit up or something, because otherwise you're gonna have that unfortunate...
V.
Yes, uh, where they cut it out, Central Hudson, and they have apparently all the right to do that. October Glory, the red maple is on their list. It is a really tall tree, so, uh...
Are there, are there smaller trees on the DOT list?
Yeah.
Yeah, there are.
My, my, my main fear with the Japanese maple is that they were gonna break, if you have snow from the DOT mouths, cause the, the branches are very brittle, they'll, they'll snap.
Thank you.
That's my name. I don't want to put anything too high that they will chop off and have just a stem there.
Yeah.
And then the other comment was about the, uh, the new sign. Have you guys thought about doing like a tenant panel sign or you just want to keep the, the number?
We thought about a tenant panel sign, but getting everyone's graphics to make sense together, it wasn't working, so I think just the number is enough and then they'll see the tenants on the facade.
Thank you.
If they can't find us by address, we don't want them coming.
I should add...
I understand and appreciate that.
I'll, I'll add, we had a, a quick offline meeting, a few of us, uh, with the applicants and to discuss the sign, because if you remember, the, the first tenant panel, the panels were vertical and anybody's, any company name would have had to have run vertical as well and that's not easy to read. So, uh, it's a little more bold to have, uh, just a vertical column that has the address. And they're also looking apparently not for traditional retail tenants, but looking more for, uh, complimentary uses to, uh, architecture. For example, the new tenant, I believe is going to be someone who, it displays, uh, the window styles that are done there. So they're looking kind of, if, if everything works out, I'll be building trade uses where there wouldn't be a lot of people coming to see it. It's really more destination or appointment or them going out, so, but either way, it's a good point.
Will it be classed as a shopping center?
Pardon me?
Will it be classed as a shopping center?
It is a shopping center because there's more than four entrances together.
So there has to be some sign coordination.
Uh, the signs are all coordinated on the, by the doors. They're all the exact same, uh, size, width, look, everything, so, uh, but their free standing sign will not have, in other words, tenant panels, will just have the address, that's it. Ms. Dexter, I've been hogging Mike.
That's okay, you can have, you can have your own mic.
Could you take that mic from her and give it back to me?
Maybe. Um, no, I'm just looking forward to seeing that building redone. I think, I love your concepts. I, it's just gonna be so refreshing to see it spruced up and brand new looking and new street trees, I think, are gonna be really good. Um, I'm just really looking forward to it.
Thank you, Mr. Pickett. No comment?
No comment.
Mr. Murphy?
Just that I echo Anne's, I echo Anne's feelings to be glad to see you're working on it. It's gonna be very nice.
Thank you.
Ms. Kane?
I also am looking forward to it. Um, I just want to piggyback on what Chris was saying about the trees. Partridge Hill does have a lot of tenants and with the low trees, I wouldn't want to block sightlines, um, because people do drive very quickly on that stretch of 9G. So just keep that in mind when you're choosing what trees to put in there.
Can you do something about the bush that's on the south side? You can't see when you pull out of Partridge Hill.
I'll bring, I'll bring my shovel.
By the way, Partridge Hill does, there's a narrow lot, there's a narrow part of that lot that runs all the way down to 9G. I looked on parcel access, you were exactly right.
That sign is on their property.
The sign is on their property, it's not off premises. That, that, I hadn't checked, but yeah, it's, I guess the way it was drawn originally and configured, so. Um, first, is there anyone from the public who'd like to speak about this application? There being none, let me first go to, uh, our attorney, Ms. Paladaro. Could we change, could we add a condition that, um, the street tree is, the street trees proposed are changed to the satisfaction of zoning administrator?
So I, I drafted a condition, revision of the site plan to replace the Japanese maples with a species on the DOT list, but do you want me to say as approved by the zoning administrator?
Do you always want to, Ted is a landscape, is a, a landscape architect by trade, I think if you just come in and, we have the list and print it out, she'll be able to make a s- yes, let's put that. That way it's easier.
Okay, so, uh, number five, condition five on the resolution will now say, revision of the site plan set to replace the Japanese maples with a species on the DOT list as approved by the zoning administrator.
Who has this filed?
That'd be me.
Did you catch all that?
No.
Do you want to just hand us your, your version, Victoria?
The number five is that street trees are, will be from the DOT list?
Yeah, here. I can, when it gets to it, I can just read the condition and send it to the administrator.
Great, thank you.
That's a really legal clear.
Yeah.
Oh, make it a motion to close the public hearing.
So move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Whereas, 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 now therefore be resolved that the planning board makes the following findings with respect to the requested modifications of the site development standards. One, sites located on the corner and there are no nearby businesses located south of the site, none of the businesses to the north of the site have sidewalks and a sidewalk on the site would be severely underutilized. Two, there are no potential adverse impacts to surrounding properties from the modification of the side, sidewalk requirement. Speed limit in the area is 55 miles per hour and the sidewalk would not connect to any nearby businesses. Be further resolved that the planning board grants the requested modification to eliminate the requirement for a sidewalk at this time. This decision may be reconsidered for future site plan amendments. Be further resolved that the planning board hereby grants site plan approval to the project as shown on the site plan set and authorizes the chair or is designated to sign site plan after compliance with the following conditions. One, payment of all fees and escrow. Two, revision of the site plan to include a note stating that the parking lot will be resurfaced and restriped. Three, DOT conceptual approval of proposed street trees. Four, revision of the site plan set to remove the portion of the timber planter located off-site on Partridge Hill Road or evidence of a license permit or other approval from the town of Hyde Park for the encroachment. Number five, okay...
I'll, I'll read it. Revision of the site plan to replace the Japanese maples with the species on the DOT list as approved by the zoning administrator.
I'm looking for a sec.
It's a team to this, tonight. Uh, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously, good luck.
Thank you.
You have a few steps to go through first with the trees. Yes?
I'd also like to thank the planning board for your guidance, cause I think the building is now better.
Thank you!
You're welcome.
It's nice to have someone from, uh, our sister board, the ZBA, say nice things about the planning board, believe me.
Wait till next week.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
This ends the work, the public hearing portion of tonight's meeting. We're now in workshop mode. The next item on the agenda is Hyde Park Town Center North, also known as Mavis. Uh, this is, whoa! So the applicants are seeking approval to raise the former Malloy's building, reconstruct what is now, to me at least, really lovely building and outstanding, a non-traditional version of a Mavis. From the very beginning, the project has changed a lot. The five bays now face toward the east, two face toward the north, one bay was dropped and what was a small pocket park has been relocated to an area on the east side of Route 9, between the current entrance to the site and the, uh, TEG Federal Credit Union. That pocket park now has stone walls, lawn, extensive landscaping and a decorative municipal clock. Uh, it's designed both to provide some shelter from the sound of Route 9, open up a dialogue in the rest of the plaza as it's continually redeveloped, as well as provide, we'll call it pedestrian refuge, in case you want to sit. And I believe that the applicants are here tonight for, to us to consider concluding Seeker and in that light, they brought, I'm guessing, Mr. Bagden from Novus. So I'll turn it over to you, Kelly.
Thank you, Kelly Leibert with, uh, KRC Planning. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, you're correct, we are here tonight, I think, to, um, discuss and hopefully conclude the Seeker review of the project. If you recall, last month, or actually, I think it was two weeks ago, um, we had come before you and there were some ancillary questions or clarifications that the board had, so we asked Mr. Bagden to come, uh, this evening. Uh, he's with Novus Engineering and he was the engineer that put together the, uh, noise study and analysis that was reviewed by Morris's office. Um, so at this point, um, I think I've probably gone through the, the project at nauseam.
No, not at nauseam, just extensively, over and over again. We all, I think we're all familiar with the site now, so...
So if you have questions, I'm happy to answer them. Uh, Mr. Bagden is here, Neil is here to answer any questions I think that you might have.
So, then let me start with, well, first, I just have a question. Mr. Bagden, uh, when I read this study, and I want to point out that Mr. Schmidt from Morse Associates thought it was a really good study, one of the best he's seen like this. He agreed with your proposal for mitigation. Uh, and what I'm talking about here is, one of the receptors was a daycare located somewhere back in through here. Uh, in your study, you, you said that it's possible that, uh, there's a rock outcrop here, that that, uh, would impact the sound measurements, that the extent of the study was not one to try to factor in how that would work if it was removed. Am I saying that correctly?
Um, well, we're confident that the rock outcrop, it's not the rock outcrop right on the road, but further back, there's a large...
Yeah, I'm, I'm just pointing here, but I know where it is.
We did take credit for some mitigation from that because it is a solid barrier and definitely will mitigate, uh, those levels on the property, on the lawn, you know, on the play area of the, uh...
So my question would be, if this, this, the, some of the rock outcrop is not on this site, uh, right there, it's on the adjoining parcel, uh, if that were removed, because I believe that there's, uh, the thought of, you know, doing further development back here if we ever get sewer, if that were removed, then that credit toward the sound mitigation would be gone, right?
I think that rock outcrop is on the property of the daycares.
Yeah, I'm not really, it's, it's, I'm not sure where it is. Do you know, Kelly?
Yeah, I think, um...
The one that I was considering.
There's actually two rock outcrops. So the one that you're pointing to is right...
There's the one right across, that's not, that's not that tall, that's just there.
Correct. There's another one that I wasn't even aware about.
Oh, yeah.
So we had the same conversation, it was like, who's on first? And I couldn't figure out what he was talking about and he finally said, Kelly, it's on the daycare property.
It's on their property, okay.
So, yeah, there's one on the property, on the daycare property, that's much more significant than this one. And so then I finally understood that was the one that they were really...
I walked back there, I just, I don't, you don't have parcel lines painted on the ground, I can't tell exactly where I am, so I wasn't sure whose property it was on, that's all.
Yeah.
Um, so in the interim, you propose, or rather, I shouldn't say in the interim, as part of the mitigation for potential, uh, impacts, cause it does rise upon occasion to a level, and these are kids we're talking about back there, you propose mitigation that includes some acoustical spray added to the ceiling, uh, observative materials during instruction, they bonded cellulose acoustical spray, uh, and some, something along the walls, uh, a minimum amount, can you...
Possibly, we, the, the primary benefit will be from the, this acoustical spray on the ceiling.
Mm-hmm.
Um, uh, it's an excellent product that is used, we've used it a lot and it, uh, you know, it basically absorbs the sound, the reverberation, you know, and that quiets it, the sound level inside and outside as well. Um, so we think that's definitely, uh, should be included in the project, whether or not anything's needed on the walls. I think we need to, as, I think as we stated in here, um, that, you know, once we get, see, see, you know, talk to the architect and understand the interior design a little more, we can make recommendations if we think they're necessary to add additional. But the primary benefits from the, the ceiling treatment, definitely.
The reason why I ask is, um, so when the planning board was first evaluating the project and it granted, the bays were all facing the west, you know, toward the residences across the way, there were two concerns and one was the impact of noise on the residences and the general enjoyment of the site. But second was the possibility that if it's too noisy, it might preclude other tenants. Not that that's not on the, that's, you know, the onus is on the site owners, that they're taking the risk, so to speak, but, uh, also the, you know, the planning board would take an interest in seeing how this is redeveloped. And so the idea would be if we could contain the noise within the building, then perhaps , uh, uses like, uh, restaurants or outdoor cafes, et cetera, could happen. So, um, I'm taking it from listening to you now, that as long as the observative spray is used in the top, that you think that would contain most of the sound, so it wouldn't limit too much what goes on in the rest of the site?
I think the rest of the site is going to have very little impact, you know, from, from this project.
Thank you. Nice to hear. Let me start with our consultants, then. Mr. Sotero, any comments or questions?
Well, I know there was some, was some talk about, as far as the mitigation measures go, whether both, and again, you know, we've been talking about it, whether, whether both of the recommendations would be incorporated, or just, you know, the first one, which is to, you know, provide the coating on the, you know, the joists and the ceiling. So, so I guess, I mean, are we pretty clear that we're just going to go with one of the suggestions, and not the acoustical on the walls, or...
I would think that we have to hear that from the board.
Okay.
But I just heard that the, their sound consultant, sound engineer, has suggested that that provides the majority of the protection, and that there might be a way working with the architect, once the interior is laid out, to add, I mean, the problem, of course, for us is that, once it's approved and they get a building permit, we won't know whether it's going to be on the walls or not, which is be, you know, that decided at some point. Yes, go on.
All right, so that's just an open...
If I could just maybe provide some clarification, that might help. So, I think, I don't want to put words into Mr. Bagdon's mouth, but what I hear him saying is that the mitigation on the ceiling is that which is really required.
It's true of most of them, yep.
And it's not necessarily required that the mitigation be placed on the walls, but it's really indicative of the design of the building and where the equipment is stored. So, we have obviously agreed to that mitigation, being that on the ceiling, and perhaps we can leave it up to Mark and George. We've met the criteria for the threshold of mitigating an impact, I think that's what I'm trying to say, for purposes of Seeker. So, if they decide, as we get the building designed, that perhaps there's some additional things that we can do on the walls, we'll certainly do those, and we would ask that he can work back and forth with George.
Absolutely.
But the threshold test of, have you met the impact and mitigated it?
Absolutely.
Okay, just wanted to say that, to clarify that.
Okay. Victoria, you can talk about, you know, your stuff at...
Okay.
One more thing. I just...
With that, let me shake the microphone back.
Okay. So, I just want to mention to the board that we had a meeting at my office a week ago, where we went over my detailed comments on the site plan, which we're not, you know, considering at tonight's meeting. I believe that's going to be considered at the first meeting in June, but we had a good, you know, meeting. I'm going to be writing a letter that should go out either the end of this week or the beginning of next week, which, you know, will summarize that. But I had, you know, my plans there, I had, you know, markups. So, what we did to not, to not hold them up is, we made PDFs of the plans with my markups on them, and we sent them, you know, to Burger Engineering, so that they could get, like, a start on some of them. Again, nothing, you know, major, these were just, you know, more details, clarifying some things on, you know, the map. And again, I will outline those in my letter, but I just wanted to let the board know that we had an offline meeting, Michael was there, Tad was there, we incorporated some green infrastructure, that was very important, you know, to Tad. And so, I think, I think we're, you know, in pretty good shape, so that was, I just wanted to just update the board on that.
Yeah, just to further clarify, those were really technical details that we were going over.
Yeah.
Like striping, asphalt detail...
You're like, hearing things.
Yeah. No, and, and I was, I actually was at the town board meeting with Andy on Monday night, where we were talking about, in this case, because it's a .7 acre of disturbance, there's no requirement that they do even more greener techniques, but because the planning board is supposed to be looking at this, and the area that's to the south of the building and through here, is where I think you're looking at doing some more greener techniques. I also pointed out that you're going to get credit, because the building wall is actually moving this way, to the west, so there's actually going to be less impervious than there is now, still be more opportunity for direct water infiltration of the ground. The other thing we discussed was Mr. Voice, the landscaper, designer, was here last time, and he already made some changes, based on earlier comments that I sent him about the landscaping details. He submitted a draft, and then Tad and I marked that up, and then went to the meeting, and it was very small details that were left. We basically, like I said, none of this has anything to do with environmental review. These are all just getting to the final end, where we're crossing every T and dotting every I, so, thank you, Pete. Ms. Pollard, comments?
So, heading towards the end, we will need a cross-access agreement between the two properties, so that's something the applicant may want to start working on now, so that it doesn't hold up signing of the site plan down the road.
Just so we're clear, the cross-access easement, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you, is between the property, this property and the property to the south, so which we would call Hyde Park Town Center.
Yes.
And this is Hyde Park Town Center North, yes?
Yes.
Just so there's clarity.
Yes. Second, impact on noise, just following up on the discussion a little earlier. Based on the Bagdon memo and the memo from George Schmidt, the NAGDEC is currently drafted to include both absorbent ceiling and absorption on the walls. So, if the board decides that both are not necessary for Seeker mitigation, we just have to cross one of them out.
So, that brings up, if we're not, I, I don't think we want to preclude them having the ability to do the wall work. At the same time, I don't think that any of us are qualified to say, "No, you have to have it," which is when Mr. Bagdon said, "It depends on the actual architecture of the final design of the building and the interior." Is there a way to kind of...
The trouble is, once you approve it, there's no way for the board to come back and make them put it up?
No, that's what I said earlier, there, it's not, it's not possible, but is there a way to allow them to do it if they want, or if they...
Sure, I mean, it's the interior of the building, and so, they can, they can do whatever they want, as long as the building inspector's okay with it on the interior.
And I...
Just to interject.
My microphone, Mr. Sweet's going to be there, otherwise.
Yeah, my name's not Mike, so I can't go with that. That was definitely the best line, in any event. I think we're all on the same page here. I think the issue here that we're all struggling with is process and timeline, right? Because of when your jurisdiction ends and when the building department picks up. And I think, you know, from a Seeker standpoint, you could probably, in, in the draft of the NAGDEC, just, you know, put relative to additional absorption on the walls at strategic locations as necessary, right? And then you've handled it from a Seeker standpoint, relative to, because as necessary implies it may or may not be necessary, right? Which relates back to the architecture, the comment about the final architectural design of the building in the study. So, that's the Seeker piece. I think the harder, more struggling piece that we can work on together...
Who's going to determine when it's necessary? I mean, are we going to have to have a reading...
Is to pull that into the...
...after it's constructed?
Well, I think, I think, well...
Why don't we just strike it?
I think we can do that, too, but I think from a Seeker standpoint, to determine whether there's environmental impact or not, that's fine. I think where it gets a little bit squirrelier is how to craft a site plan approval condition.
That's what I was going to say, we could craft it into... Craft it into a condition, this is just my opinion, maybe we could craft it into a little bit better wording into the site plan approval.
I completely agree, and it would probably be as determined as necessary...
That's up to me, is my suggestion.
No, I agree with, agree with where you're heading, and it would be a condition in the sense of, as necessary, based on final architectural drawings reviewed in consultation between the applicant's noise and Morris Associates' noise consultant.
And neat and elegant solution. My concern is, I don't want to have a condition that's vague and broad, that you can't meet, so I can't sign the site plan.
Correct. Understood, and that way, if those two go to, are talking, they've worked very well together to date, and I don't think we need to get into it. If there's a third person, then they can, you know, if they can agree, we should go to, you know, we don't need to get a whole crazy procedure going.
Mr. Bagdon, will you be able to tell, just based on the final interior plan, whether more wall absorption material is necessary?
I have to, there's certain calculations I have to do, which I haven't done yet for the interior, because I don't have enough information about it, but yes, once...
So, that's, that's possible?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
What we discussed outside, just from a timing perspective, is the architect was released on the preparation of the drawings, and so, the question was, and we have a big conference call tomorrow, the question was, between now and June 7th, could we have that resolved? And so, we think that we can have that...
Oh, great.
...resolved, so that we can come back to you and say, "We do or we don't need the wall." However, I don't want to hold up this evening, the decision...
No.
We really can't...
The majority, the majority of the evening, the majority of the noise, it's already been answered, is mitigated by, it's a matter of sort of sophisticated, more sophisticated, and reducing it even further, but the majority, Mr. Bagdon was...
Correct.
Firm and stated that on the record, so...
I'm just not sure if Victoria wants to make a...
No, we made it, we made it to just modify some of the wording for the NAGDEC, proposed NAGDEC.
So, it's up to the board at this point, you've heard.
Yep. Any other comments?
Not for me. Well, I guess I'll say, for the record, that the board members all received copies of this last week. There were just minor changes based on comments received, but nothing substantive.
So, in advance, I had our planning consultant, Ms. Axelson, revise the Part II. This was carefully looked at, and I want to say that straight, and everybody can disagree if you want to, when I call on you tonight, but we looked at it as though the potential impact, potential significant negative impacts to community character and historic resources have been adequately mitigated by project changes, specifically, the design of the building, the way it actually kind of mirrors the, what's called the graveyard, that would be basically at the perpendicular to it, just in the south plaza, the fact that the bays now face north and east, so that visitors and residents do not see open bays, they just see an attractive, a portion of an attractive building, there's a building in front of it that's including all the view, and the significant landscaping they've made throughout the site, the addition of trees, et cetera, all seems now to have mitigate, or, yes, mitigated through project changes any potential impacts there. The other potential, potentially significant impact we identified was noise, that's been mitigated. We didn't stress on traffic, but because we hired our own traffic consultant, as did the applicants, Dr. Greeley and ours, AKRF, they had a meeting of the minds, and were satisfied now that there won't be significant traffic impacts. They're still looking, again, at the entry of Pine Woods, to see if that needs to be softened from the truck delivery entrance. And in addition, they're going to be working with DOT for the new exit north only onto 9, to determine the final design of that. Right now, it's a long, for what we call the pork chop shown, but none of those would impact a Seeker determination this evening, because they're relatively minor. So, let me start to my right, Mr. Oliver, I'm doing that, Mr. Oliver, any comments? You had a chance to look at the proposed Part II?
Yes, and just one comment about the sound attenuation on the ceiling. I'm, I'm fine with that. I, I think, you know, leaving it up to the professionals is better, being we don't fully know where, where we're going to need it. And other than that, no comments.
Thank you. Ms. Dexter?
It was nice to read that EAF again, with the, the new changes to the site plan, and, and we watched the severity of everything come way down. So, I was very happy with all the progress that we've made with this project. So, I think the EAF has written, I'm in total agreement with, and I also agree with Chris, that when it comes to the sound attenuation, I'm looking for guidance from the experts. So, however, we have to word that in the resolution, and then on the site plan, right? Because one, we need to talk about the internal for mitigation of Seeker for sound, but we don't talk about the internal otherwise, because that's...
Correct, yes.
That's your guys.
So, it sounds like both you and Chris are in favor of adding "as needed" after walls at strategic locations, and then we'll work on getting the professionals to work out where it's needed.
That, that sounds acceptable to me. But thanks again for, because I think this project is really shaping up to be quite nice.
Reminder, Mr. Pickett is recused from this application, and our first alternate, Mr. Waters, is here. Mr. Waters, any comments?
No, actually, I think you touched it...
No, I think you, you touched the basis with the sound.
Thank you.
And that would be my only concern.
Thank you. Mr. Murphy?
No, I agree with my colleagues, "As needed" suits, suits me, and I'm very happy about the progress we're making.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Kane?
We've come a long way, and... What? Oh, closer, sorry. We've come a long way, and I appreciate your hard work, the, the relationship that we've built. I have to be honest, you know, living in the village is Midas in the middle of the village, my dream project, no. But I appreciate the business standpoint that the owners have argued, and understand where they're coming from. I think it's going to end up being a good project, and I do support the "as needed" clause for the wall mitigation, but definitely the ceiling mitigation. I think that'll be a benefit, not only to the people in the surrounding area, but to the workers in the building.
Thank you.
I think we have concurrence.
Sounds like it.
So, before we go on to vote on the NAGDEC, I just wanted to turn it over to Mr. Waters, because he had some concerns about the cupola, proposed, the request for a cupola.
Right. I, I just didn't know where we stood with that, and...
Well, we, actually, I have the elevation here.
I have it, too. Do you want to use mine?
I have the elevation, I just didn't have a microphone. We, I have the elevation. Oops. That's how I feel. After today. Okay. We did speak to Architect about it, and he has concerns about it, because he thinks it's going to affect the scale of the building, and he's been very, 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 very receptive to making all of the changes that the board has asked for, but he really had a hard time putting the cupola, well, we've really talked about doing a weather vane on the building, because he felt like it addressed and negatively affected the massing of the building. So, that's where we are with it, we're asking for your indulgence here on not putting the cupola up, and accept the significant changes that we've made to the building, otherwise with the glass and the roofline and the barn-like structure.
Right. I guess my only, my concerns are that I think the ridge line is, especially from the east elevation, is very long, and I think the cupolas, weather vane, whatever you want to call it, clear story, would break that up, and I think it would also help illuminate if, depending on how it's done, and the scale, obviously, you leave that up to the architect. I did do a sketch to see what it would look like, and I have that, you know, here. I don't, I think two of them would be better to break between the cross gable in the center of the structure, which is on the west side.
And again, I do appreciate the fact that you've done a sketch, and we did have a discussion with him after the last planning board meeting, so I'm asking for your indulgence and understanding that he's feeling as if it would negatively affect the massing of the building, and has done a significant amount of work, making a lot of modifications that the board has asked for with the glass and the, you know, the massing of the building. So, I'll, I'll leave it at that.
Let's just, does anybody else want to weigh in on this? I mean, if it's, if we're leaving Mr. Waters out to dry, so to speak, then it's just him pushing for, but does anybody else have a strong feeling about this?
I, I don't know if I have a strong feeling about it, but in, in one breath, I could see the, how it would complement the architecture, having the two cupolas, but in another breath, I mean, we fought for, I think, five or six months about the elevations of the building, and how, how massive it was in the village, and I think if we put two nice cupolas breaking up the, the ridge line, it's going to bring the, the focal point higher on the building, creating a bigger structure in the middle of the village. And like I said, it would add to the architecture, but I could definitely appreciate the, the applicant's, architect's comments regarding the scale of the building, and how it could really increase the mass of it.
Thank you, Ms. Dexter.
I think I'd really like to see the cupolas added, because of the discussion that we had about the fact that this is sitting within, internally, it's sitting with, internally within the shopping center, and that by having that focal point up, I think the, you likened it to something like a church spire, that in a small town, village, you, there's always this kind of focal point that you can see, and that immediately put in my mind, and that's why I asked, would it be possible? I also have been living in this town forever, and I, again, I can remember the very large barn that was behind the Everready Diner, and that had a big gorgeous cupol, cupola belfry, whatever you want to call it. And I would just, I don't, I don't know, I, I can see what the architect is saying, but I live here, and I think that that would, again, kind of, it'd be that, it'd be a focal point, even more so.
Can I interject just one thought?
Of course.
Is that okay? I completely understand and appreciate where you're coming from, from the east elevation. If you're now essentially going to have, you want to, you want to do it, you're going to basically have five elements going across now. I think it gets a little bit umgopach, to use a technical term there, at that point.
What was that?
It gets, it gets a little, it gets a little cluttered.
What was that word?
Umgopach, it's a, it's a Yiddish word. It basically means it gets a little bit cluttered.
Did I use the Italian word?
Yeah, yeah, exactly. My concern is, I completely understand where Mr. Waters is coming from, when you look at the east elevation. Now, mind you, who's going to see it from the east elevation, right? And I think you're, that's the balancing act you're, you're in. I'm not, we're not fighting with you, we're, and we don't want to lose sight of the forest and the tree.
When you say, when you say it's going to see it from the east elevation, we're hoping that this site will be further developed, and if we're going to have housing, it's going to be behind this site, basically. Seriously, that's...
No, I, I, I hear you.
I mean, that's, if we're going to have a walkable village, that's where it kind of has to go, and you're aware that there's an assertive grant that involves changing of zoning for this area in general, so...
I think, but, I think...
I mean, your point's...
I'm not fighting with you, I think that's the balance, that's the true balance that you have to sit there, and no matter how small you make the cupola, to break it up on the east side, I think the aesthetic balance on the west side is just, I think it gets cluttered, and, and I, and look, we can talk about aesthetics all night long and fight over it, I just wanted to introduce that to the conversation, and, and not try and...
There is no fighting, there is no fighting.
I, I just, like I said, my, my feeling is, the building is suppressed, which is great. The embellishment would happen above, which would be like, it would be an architectural enhancement, I believe, to the structure, especially that it's supposed to look like a barn, and I don't know too many barns that don't have cupolas, especially that size. So, I think it would, it would enhance the structure, and then the other thing, we keep talking about it, that you'll only see it from the east and the west, that's not true, you'll see it from the north and the south. Because there's two, because you're, you'll see the spire above the, the north face, which kind of, to me, is a little bland on, on the drawing, and definitely from the south, it's bland, but if you, if you, there's nothing happening on the south side, actually. It's, it's, seems, the structure looks naked to me. But, but, everything else, I don't agree with the five gables, I mean, there's the House of the Savon Gables, right? I mean, we hear things all...
Well, the issue, I mean, the issue gets to the point, at what point do you start to really modify this building? And so, I think that we heard, we hear what you're saying, you know, I can talk to the architect about it again, but we feel like it's negatively affecting the building, that's our opinion. We've worked really hard with you to come up with a building that we think is fantastic. We've added these, you know, the barn-like doors. I think that the building, the way that it is, is gorgeous. You're seeing it on a plan in a vacuum, so you're not seeing some of the other components that are at the site that will be introduced with landscaping, and of course, the clock and the park. So we're asking to not put the cupola...
I think that's been made clear. I'm just, yes, Mr. Murphy, your turn.
To start with, I'm a cupola guy. Got one on my garage. Okay? However, I think that this still America, people have private property, they, we can make suggestions of this type, but for us to make it a condition or to imply that it is a condition of some kind of architectural approval, I think that's a mistake. I think we've made the suggestion, and I think it's only right to private property if the owners don't want it, then I think the subject ought to be old.
The owner has also unwanted eight bays facing the west. I think it's imperative that the board actually does undertake the kinds of details that we're going over here. Whether a majority wants it or not is really the issue to me, because of course, whenever we're going to consider a vote, I like to have unanimity. That's all. So, but I understand your point, and this is aesthetics, which is a difficult matter to sort of resolve. Tori, where do you stand on this? Or do you stand?
Um, I really very much like the idea of the cupola. My bubby was the queen of ungapascas, so I know where that goes, but I don't, I don't think five elements puts it there. I, on the other hand, I don't think the, the view from the east necessarily needs to be broken up at this point, because right now, it's really just the road right next to the building, and there aren't people at a great enough distance to see that facade. On the other hand, the owners and the neighboring property are talking about future development, so it will become a focal point in the future. So I'm like, hmm, I'm walking the ridge line.
We're on, we're on the third hand, right?
We're on the third hand, exactly. I really like the idea of the cupolas. I think right now, it's a really nice-looking building, but does not necessarily look like a barn. And if you're going for the barn, I think the cupolas would really do it.
Can I make a suggestion? Mr. Waters has extra versions of the cupolas that he's drawn. Why don't you take them to the architect and just show him, and then we can resolve this at the next meeting? Because I'd like to go ahead and move forward now. And in addition, we don't have, we're missing one of our members, Ms. DiNapoli. I have a feeling she'll be saying, yes, put them on, which means there'd be four requesting it. So again, that's not to insult the architect or say that we know better. It's just a matter of how it fits into the community itself, et cetera. So if you don't mind taking these over to him, he's actually got them to scale, et cetera, you can take a look.
And there should be one copy for the file as well.
Yeah, and there is. Mr. Waters made several copies. And just so everyone knows, Mr. Waters is a designer. He designs buildings, et cetera, and was an industrial designer before that in his career. So moving on now, if we're all ready to vote on the neg deck, who has this resolution?
I do.
Thank you.
So we're clear. We're adding the words "as needed" to the end of the first paragraph on page two of the notice.
Can you say that again?
So the notice of negative declaration on page two, end of the first paragraph, adding the words "as needed."
It's in this one, Ann.
"As needed."
Oh, where's... No, that's old. I don't have, I don't have a, I don't have the notice of neg deck. I just have the determination of significance.
Right. You should have had this and a part three. They were all sent. Maybe they weren't put in everybody's boxes? Yep?
Oh, I mean, I have, I have my own copy. I, I don't...
Not in the official file.
Right.
Okay.
Right.
Here we go. There we go.
Page two.
And it's already made, we don't have to read this.
There we go. I'll put that in there.
Yeah, you can go back.
And I don't have to read this, correct?
No.
But we've, we have all read this.
Yes.
And it was well-written.
Yes.
Okay. So can I do the determination of significance?
Mm-hmm. I mean, we're going to stipulate that we've all read the new part two.
I have.
Yep. Good.
Everybody's nodding, okay. Town of Hyde Park Planning Board, resolution determining significance, Hyde Park Town Center North, Mavis, May 3, 2017, resolution number 16-15B, whereas, 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 now therefore be it resolved that for the reasons set forth in parts one, two, and three of the EAF and the attached notice of determination of significance, the planning board hereby adopts a negative declaration finding that the project as proposed will not result in any significant adverse environmental impacts, and that a draft environment, draft environmental impact statement will not be prepared. Be it further resolved that the planning board hereby directs the secretary to the planning board to send the attached notice of determination of significance to the environmental notice bulletin for publication and to make all other required filings.
Thank you, Chris. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
We'll see you in two weeks and hope that we can resolve the cupola controversy. Mr. Bagnone, thank you for coming in and being so clear and lucid in what your statements were, and for explaining that there is a way, once there's further design in the interior, for you to figure out what's needed on the walls or not. So where are you based, exactly? Novus?
Based?
Mm-hmm.
Outside Albany in Delmar.
Okay.
Just right on the south shore of Albany.
I know where Delmar is. I just wondered, because we, we, you're, I think, the first sound engineer that's come in, besides the one reviewing for us, Mr. Schmidt, has come in and talked to us. So it's interesting to know more about your field, because it's, it's a big concern for residents initially about the noise, and Mr. Schmidt explained a lot to us at the time about lawnmower sounds, all the ambient sounds that go into this, and how, but also the fact that this is a percussive or staccato sound, which is sort of irritating by definition. So it was a pleasure to read all your report, put it that way. Some of it went right over my head, but still, I got a lot of it because you wrote it in layman's terms for someone like me. So thank you.
Well, good.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just ask a quick question. I know at the last meeting, we deferred the public hearing to the 17th. I think that was anticipation of us submitting the site plan. It's going to take us a little bit more time, and we appreciate the meeting that we had to get the head start on the drawings. I anticipate that we're going to submit on the 24th of May...
Which is fine.
For the meeting on June 7.
Which is fine.
So we may just come on the 17th, and it might just be a ministerial...
That's okay.
Answer any questions and then defer to the...
That's okay.
Okay.
We could just come on the 24th to see what your architect has said about the cupola. I guess I'd like to resolve that, if possible.
So we won't have a new submission, anything for you to review on the 17th?
No.
Okay.
That's fine.
Just so everyone understands.
And owners back there, appreciate your patience and forbearance in working with us, and we'll see you in two weeks.
Thank you.
Just, I hope, there hasn't been public comment in a long time about this. Now, I think most of the residents who had their initial concerns expressed, I know many of them have talked to me, they've been watching the meetings, and have expressed, some of them have expressed their pleasure with the project is now. The ones who, a couple of those were the ones who spoke most vehemently against it, have, you know, altered their minds on this. So again, this is how the process is supposed to work, so that both sides are happy.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll see you in two weeks.
We appreciate it.
This goes in the official file. Are you ready, anybody else?
It's a Yiddish.
Do you guys want to stick copies of the cupola?
Like, however you go to sell it.
Yes, please. He's drawing two, so it's going to match what's there.
One is larger, that would be in the center, this would be the...
Two small ones.
Yeah.
Nice job.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Oh, this is me, isn't it?
When it's raining, I don't even bother down there.
I know.
But when you see a big barn, it's a big barn, and they usually hatch.
I like the idea of the two of them myself. That's just me. Okay. The next item on the agenda is Statsburg Hutchins Storage. The application, the applicants are seeking approval, a site plan amendment approval. In this instance, we normally don't waive public hearings, but we have because we had a recommendation from our zoning administrator. In essence, the applicant is seeking to change the sort of consideration of the use from storage facility only and office to actually shopping center, because there are multiple entrances for discreet spaces. That entails a new sign, which everyone's had a chance to review. And there also, they got variances from the ZBA for the decals to go on windows that look like pull-up doors. And they're going to be painting the two existing pull-up doors the same color of Kelly green. We had a material, we had the sample submitted, the color, and have gone over all that. County planning made comments. They were pretty much all relating to the sign. I alerted Mr. Turner. He sent a response that was sent out to all of you. So really, the discussion tonight is just, do we think that everything is copacetic or fine with the response that was provided by Mr. Turner? Before I ask the board, are there any further comments from the consultants on this?
Just that we did receive comments. I think you just said it, Duchess County Planning.
Yes.
And so...
And a response from Mr. Turner, so we're just here to evaluate that.
Once we're discussed, then the resolution has been prepared.
Good. I kind of usurped your position. Do you want to go into any of what you, what I just spoke about? I'm sorry.
I don't think there's any need to further expand on them. If you, if you want, I can...
No, it's just in the interest, it's in the interest of moving the process forward. So board comments, are you satisfied with the sign as proposed?
Yes.
So the only, thank you. The only issue that I saw that was relevant, rephrase that, not the only issue, but I thought that the only response that didn't necessarily address Heather's concern was that there's a seventh tenant panel. If you guys are okay with it, then we can leave, leave it as is. There's a condition in the resolution, as written, that asks for the removal. Basically, Ms. LeVronway's comment was, there's no reason to advertise a tenant space unless there's an opening, and that would be that the tenant panel will be removed. They gave a response that you would put something different on there. It doesn't really matter to me. It's, it's just up to the board.
I mean, the other thing that I identified in the communications was, because that's an extra panel, there was no number on there for the 911 address. That could easily go in that panel.
And that's probably a good idea, by the way. I think you're required to put 911 addresses on signs now. Oh, the person who would know is behind you, and he's nodding very seriously. This is fire and safety behind you. So yes, so you should put the 911 number on, so...
Well, then you'd have to acknowledge that change somehow, so Ted doesn't send them back.
Oh, yes. Wait. To add, to add a 911 address on the extra tenant panel on the freestanding sign, condition number two.
So revision, can you read it again?
Revision of the site plan to add a 911 address on the extra tenant panel on the freestanding sign. Instead of just to eliminate, to add a 911 address. Any further discussion, board? Did you get this resolution again?
Yes. I doubled, I...
Did it back-to-back?
Yep. I had no clue. I was looking.
Any further discussion? Let's vote.
Town of Hyde Park Planning Board, resolution to grant site plan amendment approval to Hutchins, Hutchins Statsburg Storage LLC, May 3, 2017, resolution number 16-24C. Whereas, 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 now therefore be it resolved that the planning board hereby grants site plan amendment approval to the project as shown on the site plan set and authorizes the chair or has designated to sign the site plan after compliance with the following conditions. One, payment of all fees and escrow. Two, revision of the site plan to add a 911 address on the freestanding sign. That's it. May I have a second?
On the extra panel on the freestanding?
On the, oh, on extra panel. On seventh panel?
Can you join us?
On seventh panel.
There you go.
Second.
Thank you, Tori. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Good luck.
Thank you. After two years, you don't see me anymore.
Well, I want to just point out, there are a lot of, you've changed, you know, there's been changes to this every time. I take it that's doing the market forces and what you're learning about, you know, as you go. So unfortunately, because you didn't know all of this at the first time, we could have taken care of all of that at one time, but this is how it goes. So good luck. We appreciate you keeping the, your investment into the area. And we were talking, we agreed to keep the parking banked, but at some point, as things, if you get more tenants, we'll look down the line to make sure there's no parking. I don't think there'll be an issue, because the nature of the businesses you're finding in there aren't requiring a lot of, you know, parking.
Well, there's another whole section...
In the back.
In the back that will not be developed. It's absolutely cost prohibitive.
It is?
Yeah. No, you've got to blow out and build this big area in which you can turn a fire truck in, and the cost of just building the ground up, building the retention wall and all of that, just triples the cost of the buildings. It takes the return on investment out multi, multi-years, and it's just, it will never happen.
It's a tight spot back there, and I know there was the DEC wetland as well.
That whole street's like that.
Yeah, it is. Oh, let me sign. If you need anything, be sure and contact us, though. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda, we have a request for, the last application title we had was Carriage Trails at Town Center. This is more commonly known as Crofton Muse. This is the application for the proposed townhouses that are basically behind the Moose Club off 9G. We had a request. They have not had time to complete construction in the two years, so we keep extending it, by the way. We had a little discussion last time about vesting, and in this case, it appears that the applicants are constitutionally vested as well, because they spend a lot of money by roughing out the roads, bringing the water line up from Hudson, et cetera. We also, today, not all of you saw it, but Mr. Turrens of DC WWI Water and Wastewater Authority had said he'd heard that there might be some movement on developing this finally. So all he asked was that we all make note that if they're going to do so, while the water line was brought up off Hudson, it's never been turned over to the Water and Wastewater Authority, and they want to engage that. Pete, you probably already knew that. So make it a motion instead of a public hearing for the May 17th to consider the extension.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you. Motion carries. And then I believe we have a site plan waiver. This is for Mr., I think I'm going to pronounce it Rinksler, who lives at 33 Horseshoe, 33 Horseshoe Drive. Horseshoe Drive is in the scenic area statewide significance as defined by the state, but anything on Horseshoe is not visible from the road or the two historic sites which give rise to the SAS. We have a recommendation for the waiver from Ms. Moss. It's just to put a deck on the rear of a house. Does anyone have this application or this, this resolution?
I have the resolution.
Thank you.
Okay. May 3, 2017, resolution number 2017-18. Whereas, 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 therefore be resolved that the Town of Hyde Park Planning Board hereby waive site plan requirements for the proposed changes as described in the building permit received by the Building Department April 28, 2017, and further request to the planning board dated April 28, 2017.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
The motion carries. Chris, you were absent on the March 15 minutes, but did everyone, did everyone else have a chance to take a look at the minutes?
Yes.
Lovely job.
Nice job.
Lovely job. We know it's tedious.
And so efficient.
Yep. Make it a motion to approve those minutes.
So moved. Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And any other business? Make it a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.